Dayton City Commission Meeting will now come to order. Please rise. Okay?
Yeah.
We're still ready? Okay? You got another glass?
Yeah.
You want one?
I'm good.
Sure? Okay. Dayton City Commission Meeting will now come to order, and I thank you for standing. The invocation will be given this evening by Commissioner Turner-Sloss, and please remain standing for the pleasure of the ladies.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may ask for a moment of silence for the families who've lost loved ones. The Murphy family, we'd like to give our condolences to the Murphy family, the Roberts family, Henderson family, and the Moody family. And I'll ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you with bowheads and humble hearts. We thank you for this day. Lord, we ask that you continue to guide us and lead us. Bless us with your mercy and your grace. Give us a discernment, wisdom, and understanding and passion. Lord, we ask that you continue to guide us and keep us, and just bless our community, the city, the state, this country with your peace and your glory. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner-Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion then to excuse Commissioner Shaw from the season's meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
It's been probably moved and seconded to excuse Commissioner Chris Shaw from the season's meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, may I have a motion then to approve the minutes from the June 26 meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
All right, then probably moved and seconded twice that we approve the minutes from the June 26 meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay. The presentations. Ms. Blackshear, have any communications?
No communication or petition.
Okay, thank you. And no presentations?
No presentations.
Okay. Do you have any additions or additions to the calendar?
Yes, I have one addition. I'd like to request the addition of Emergency Resolution Number 6807-24 authorizing the special privilege permit for the downtown Dayton partnership for the erection of a memorial for the mass shooting in the Oregon District on August 4th, 2019, and declaring an emergency.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Ms. Dickstein, any additions, additions, or comments to the calendar?
I have none.
None?
None, Your Honor.
All right, good. Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on calendar items?
None on calendar items.
On calendar items. Commissioners, comments on calendar items?
I have none, Your Honor.
None?
None.
Okay, then may I have a motion then to approve the city manager's recommendations?
Your Honor, I move, we approve the city manager's recommendations.
Second, Your Honor.
Then probably moved and seconded to approve the city manager's recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say no. Okay. First reading then, oh, legislation. I'm gonna do your job. Legislation.
First reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6807-24 authorizing the special privilege permit for the downtown Dayton partnership for the erection of a memorial for the mass shooting in the Oregon District on August 4th, 2019, and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, Resolution Number 6807-24 being declared an emergency, I move for its immediate passage.
Second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Then probably moved and seconded to declare Resolution Number 6807-24 as an emergency. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Second reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6807-24 authorizing the special privilege permit for the downtown Dayton partnership for the erection of a memorial for the mass shooting in the Oregon District on August 4th, 2019. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner-Sloss.
Aye.
Okay.
That is all, Your Honor.
Okay, so we have a board appointment. Commissioner Joseph.
Yes, sir. Your Honor, I move to appoint Rebecca Hickey and Leah Conicki to the Landmark Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, so we've probably moved and seconded to appoint Rebecca Hickey and Leah Conicki to the Landmark Commission Board for a term ending June 30th, 2026. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay. Okay. Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on?
Yes.
Period. Okay.
Yes, Your Honor, there are nine citizens who have registered. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on. You will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, please be mindful that this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand-clapping, finger-snapping, and conversations that will prevent the city commission from hearing the speaker's comments. Call to the podium, Joseph Abrams.
Your name and address for the record. Joseph Abrams, 117 Park Drive, Dayton, Ohio 45410. May I begin? Mr. Mims, I want to talk today about what happened this weekend. I've seen your response to the shooting on specifically June 29th. I know you're dealing with a lot of gun violence, and your response is great if you're talking about starting to try to address a lot of the violent crime in our neighborhood. Your response is horrendous if you're talking about taking responsibility for the actual events of June 29th, because we're not talking about an incident of youth violence, we're not talking about what parents could do or do differently, or what churches could do to help, or what intervention specialists. We're talking about two adults in your employ using guns and bullets budgeted for by this city to murder a 16-year-old child, not even a young man, as you upgraded him to in your And you know, you cited a lot of crime statistics for things that people in black communities are dealing with disproportionately. And you gotta take some responsibility for that, right? And not okie-doke on that either, because not all parents are facing the same set of circumstances. They don't have the same budget for dealing with being a good parent and taking solid care of their kids the same way as everybody else. How many jobs does a person have to work to pay rent in substandard housing in neighborhoods that remain unsupervised, no oversight, from specifically policies from this administration and successive administrations? Well, you got plenty of oversight time for like out-of-control sunflowers in neighborhoods where you're trying to bring in nice white people from out of town and raise the property values. And, but like, you got, you know, it's no surprise that crime is high where people are getting their groceries from the dollar store. And you just leave this big giant trash pile next to the Gem City Market for most of the year. You're last in line for road repairs. Your schools keep getting robbed by development projects for downtown that are under abatements or because you want to bring in a new private school. And you gotta take another level of responsibility on this too, because we had a police reform process, and you were in charge of the use-of-force policy group. And when it came time to pass that use-of-force group policy, the police didn't want any oversight from outside because they were facing a youth crime wave, they said, a spike in youth crime. So they specifically didn't want any outside oversight when it comes to dealing with violent children. That means you, Shaw, Joseph specifically, gave them a free pass to murder kids, and that's what we have happening now. And you need to have a real investigation, not from your Democratic Party insider friends at the county bringing in the murdering and torturing sheriffs. And we need the state and also give us the need.
Thank you for your comments.
Ms. Abrams, your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Abrams.
Bishop Richard Cox.
I'm Bishop Richard Cox, 1453 Liscum Drive, Dayton, Ohio.
Evening.
To the mayor and to the commissioners, to the city manager and the police chief. Let me make one thing critically clear. I've heard your side and the police chief's side. You need to hear what the community is saying. Number one, this child should not have been killed. Number two, the sheriff's department isn't qualified to handle an investigation of this case. They got problems in the jail with people dying, and they're under investigation for that. Number three, what y'all scared of? Y'all don't want to let the officers know who killed this boy? Y'all killed him, and y'all ain't gonna show us who they did, who did it? You ain't gonna put their pictures or their names, and they got reprimands in their personnel file? We must put the responsibility where responsibility lies. It lies on the police department. There's always been a strained relationship in the African-American community with the Dayton Police Department. The sheriff's isn't really qualified to investigate because years ago, they killed Dante Martin 75 yards from his house and shot his back window out. The Dayton Police Department ain't qualified. Y'all had a white guy running down the street naked with a machete toward the police. You didn't kill him, but you killed an African-American 16-year-old boy. Was it racially motivated? Did you kill him because he was black? We must realize, you can't come into our community and kill our children and think we're not gonna say anything about it. You got a police force that's totally out of control. Since police reform, they haven't gotten any better. They've gotten worse, and we don't like it. Now, we want to be able to stop the violence as much as you do. We were out there Sunday with social workers. We were out there with mental health people and pastors, quieting those kids down. We want to be able to deal with this particular thing for violence as much as you do. But most of these families are poverty-stricken. Most of these families are dealing with racism. You got a police force who don't know how to talk to black folks. We're not thugs, we're not criminals. And don't paint a picture of this kid for being somebody he wasn't. He played football, he played basketball, he got awards. Cut it out! We're not gonna stand for it, we're gonna hold you accountable, and if we have to demonstrate that we don't get any justice, you will get no peace. We don't want you to have injustices heaped upon just us. We're holding the police department accountable. It's a shame, and we don't like it.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Bishop Cox.
Alec Johnson. Name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Alec Johnson. I live at 4822 Hassan Circle in Dayton. I'm here to deliver an official statement from the Party for Socialism and Liberation regarding the murder of Brian T. Moody, a 16-year-old boy gunned down last Saturday by two Dayton police officers. Police have not released the names of the officers involved and initially withheld all details, other than that an individual may have had a gun. Ohio is a permitless concealed carry and open carry state. Families were present and outside along the streets. Police have refused to explain what caused them to engage with Brian or why Brian ran in the first place. Their reckless and violent actions have cost the life of another black person. Police brutality is not an accident under white supremacist capitalism. Dayton police have repeatedly terrorized a community they have sworn to protect. Last month, the Dayton police officer was convicted of crimes regarding sexually abusing multiple women. Last year, another Dayton police officer chased Delondreus Webster during a traffic stalk. They shot him, claiming that he possessed a firearm. This year, police across the country have killed 637 people. The Southwest Ohio Party for Socialism and Liberation condemns this shooting and the Dayton Police Department. Police brutality and racism are deeply rooted in capitalism. We demand accountability for all senseless acts of violence committed by the state. We stand for the overthrow, dismantling, and complete replacement of the core institutions of the capitalist state, namely, the police, prisons, military, and courts. The core of the capitalist state cannot be reformed into a neutral body. It must be abolished by means of revolution. The true purpose of the police is not really to protect and serve in the interest of public safety. They are, in fact, enforcers of a violent social order where a small number of people have all the wealth and power, and a huge number of people suffer deep oppression. Authorities in this country have inflicted terrible violence on black people for as long as the government has existed. Martin Luther King Jr. declared many years ago that "justice is the public face of love." It is in this spirit that we demand justice for Brian T. Moody. No justice, no peace, I repeat, no justice, no peace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Johnson. Joshua Ward.
Good evening.
Name and address for the record.
Joshua Ward, 1023 West Grand Avenue.
You may begin.
Good evening, Mayor Mims, esteemed commissioners, Mrs. Dickstein, and all gathered tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to share just a few brief words. I'm here this evening along with a few members of the Omega family because we're concerned about what's happening in our city. With today's reporting that a second victim in last week's shooting on Home Avenue has passed away, the recent wave of gun violence in our community, especially among our youth, is a tremendous problem. And I know that I'm preaching to the choir. I know you all share this concern and are working urgently to address it. Thank you for your passion, your commitment to restore peace in our streets, and please know that I'm willing to assist however possible. We have been partners in serving this community for many years and remain committed to doing just that. With that said, however, I remain concerned about the shooting death of 16-year-old Brian Moody on Saturday evening. He was a child. And neither the recent wave of gun violence nor the multiple negative images of Brian that have been flooded throughout media outlets over the past few days should be used to somehow justify the death sentence that was doled out to him on Saturday evening. I always strive to do what is right, to advance what is right, to defend what is right. And after watching the video segment that was released on Monday, something does not feel right. Perhaps we don't have all the facts yet, perhaps there's more to the story, but if this video was all that we have, I will simply say, it isn't enough. It isn't enough to convince me that Brian ever pointed a gun at the officer or in any way threatened his life or safety. And as such, it isn't enough to convince me that Brian deserved to lose his life that evening without recourse. I'm not here this evening to make a name for myself. I'm not here this evening because I need to create some sort of platform or advance any type of agenda. I'm here this evening because I'm a father of two black boys, aged 12 and 7, and we live less than three minutes away from where this happened. I'm here tonight because I'm a pastor who strives to model my life after the wisdom of Scripture. Scripture which instructs me in Isaiah Chapter 1, Verse 17, "to learn to do right, to seek justice, to defend the oppressed, to take up the cause of the fatherless, and to plead the case of the widow." This is my job and my moral responsibility to love my neighbor and to seek justice on his or her behalf. As the investigation into this shooting continues, it is my prayer that true justice for Brian is attained. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Wolf.
Thank you for your comments.
Carlo Heard.
Carlo Heard, 1485 Benson Drive, Dayton, Ohio 45406.
You may begin.
Evening.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners, city managers, and all present. I'm here, and I didn't write anything down. Everything I attempted to write, I end up bawling up. I am a person who has spent time in prison. I am proof that people can change. I am a changed man. I am assistant pastor of Omega Baptist Church. I do right. I do my best to live by Scripture. And yet, every time a police officer gets behind me, I'm fearful for my life. This continues to be the case because nothing is being done different in this city. It's evidenced while this young man was gunned down. You've spent more time creating this horrifying image, excuse me, of this young man. All I'm seeing is you trying to paint this picture of this criminal, and if he was that category of criminal, it seems like you would have been, you would have had a warrant out for his arrest, but yet, you've dug up all of this information about this young man, excuse me, because that's what you called him, child, that was hunted down and killed in cold blood. You produced a video that I watched myself personally 10 times. If you have evidence that shows this young man pointing a gun, why won't you show it? Because that tape that you showed, that you, Chief, steal and showed it to us in slow motion, frame by frame, it did not show this young man being a threat. It showed this man doing what I would have done. I would have ran. A pastor, I would have ran, because this is, this is the result when police get behind young black men. You can have white men coming at you with weapons, and they are arrested peacefully. And yet, this boy was killed. Another family left decimated, devastated, and even when they try to paint a different picture of him to the news, another story is followed up behind something that is so irrelevant and has nothing to do with him being shot down. And I'm wondering what's gonna be done about it, because one thing for certain, two things for sure, we vote. Our vote is our voice, and all of you are elected officials. And I know all of you, but something needs to be done, and if it's not done, we will protest and we will get you out of office.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Malique Akbar.
Evening.
Name and address for the record.
My address is 147 East Hill Crest.
State your name also.
Malique Akbar.
I'm sorry, I can't get your first name, sorry.
Malique Akbar. I am the president of New Era Dayton, which is a national organization out of Detroit, Michigan. Started, we have the number-one community organization program in the country, where we go door-to-door, we check on our citizens, we pass our resources. I was in the midst of one of these hood-to-hood organizations when this happened. This is devastating to us. The community is in outrage. There's nothing that we want to hear other than taking care of the business that needs to be taken care of in the Dayton Police Department. This was a murder of a 16-year-old community member. You can see from the tape that the police department put out, he was running away from the police. Running away from the police. How is he a threat to the police when he's running away? That's all, I just, I need to know that. That has to be clear to me, to make me feel some type of way that he had to die, running away from the police. Okay, now that's one thing I want to talk about. Second thing I want to talk about is where is the money that we spent for police reform? The de-escalation tactics that were supposed to be put in place when this stuff happens? It's supposed to be an automatic click that kicks in for de-escalation tactics. We haven't seen that. No de-escalation tactics was performed, from what I've seen. And third, our kids don't have nothing to do. Y'all took the centers away from our kids? Yeah, they out in the streets playing, because they don't have nothing to do. There's no programs for them. When they get out of school, they're just out there trying to enjoy what we all did when we was kids. But our kids in the city, they grew up a little rougher than everybody else, so they need structured programs to get their mind on different things, which we don't have. Let's build those community centers back up. Let's take some of that money that we film feeding downtown and putting it on the west side, so we can, our kids, we would know where our kids at. So I just want to say, let's put those programs together. Let's put them together, and we need to focus on police reform. I want to see some of that money going towards these officers, because I understand they're trying to get home, too. My kids trying to get home, they kids trying to get, I mean, they, they trying to get home, but if you coming to the west side of Dayton, Dayton Police, be the police.
Please, please talk to us.
Be the police.
Sir, please talk to us.
Be the police, because if you coming over there to kill our kids, we don't want you over there. We don't want you over there. We'll police ourselves. If it means y'all coming in our community, killing our future, our babies, we'll police ourselves.
And thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Akbar. Ashley Irwin.
My name is Ashley Irwin. My address is 595 North Galloway Street, Xenia, Ohio 45385.
You may begin.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. I'm here as a concerned citizen of the greater Dayton region, as someone who frequents the city of Dayton, and I spend a great deal of time and money in the city of Dayton, and I've lived here previously. On June 29th, a group of teenagers gathered outside in a Dayton neighborhood. At some point, DPD arrived on scene, a teenage child ran away, was chased and shot in the back by not one, but two officers. The first place I saw this reported was on a local news outlet, which routinely takes press releases directly from government agencies such as DPD and publishes them verbatim without edits. This is easy to see if you directly compare press releases from agencies with the news stories. They are typically the exact same, down to typos and poor grammar. Local news outlets regurgitated the eyebrow-raising press releases from DPD while simultaneously ignoring the press conference organized by state and regional nonprofits advocating for an Ohio BCI investigation, release of unedited body camera footage, and naming of the officers involved. Publishing a press release verbatim is not journalism, it is PR. In this first article, I saw the word "male" when referring to the person killed, and I knew immediately they meant a child. Had he been 18, they would have called him a man. They said the male produced a firearm. The next article I saw contained a photo of a gun. The news outlet had still not told us that the male that was shot was a child, but we're looking at the gun that was found on the scene. Several different phrases have been used to describe this gun. First, the male produced it. Then, it was on the scene. So which is it? Was it on the scene, or was it at some time in the possession of the child that they killed? Witnesses claim that shortly after the police arrived, an officer told the child that if he ran, he would shoot him. The boy ran away and was shot in the back by two officers numerous times in front of his neighbors and peers. This account is supported by the edited body cam footage released by police on July 1st. In the video, the officer approaching the boy can be heard yelling, "You're gonna get shot, you're gonna get shot," as the boy ran away. I want to say that again, because that is before they claim the firearm is produced. In the video, the officer approaching the boy can be heard yelling, "You're gonna get shot, you're gonna get shot." No gun can be seen in this video, and the body cam footage of the officer nearest the victim has not been released. By their own account, the police were being proactive to address pop-up parties that they allege have become a source of violence in the community. While it's true that there have been too many shootings in the city recently, this gathering had not been a source of conflict nor violence. Police were patrolling, saw a gathering, asked to speak to a child, and the child ran away.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Irwin.
Shondell Actson. Name and address for the record.
Shondell Actson, and 623 Nagley Place, Dayton, Ohio 45402.
You may begin.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak to the mayor, to the city commissioners, and to the city. and to the city manager and the community. I am a resident of Negley Place. I live within feet of where this young man, Brian T. Moody, was murdered. I am standing here today because there were a couple of different things I wanted to address. One, I wanted to talk about that there was a, when the individuals from this building, including the Chief of Police, there was an insensitive matter that was going on, and there was no compassion or empathy shown at that moment. We did not need for you guys to come out and tell us what happened or to defend the police at that moment. We needed you guys to show up and show compassion for the family that had faced the loss and for the community, for the young people that had witnessed this loss. There was a lot of things going on that night. One of the first things I noticed after this happened was there were police that was on the scene that were laughing. They were laughing, and it was a tough situation to try to make sure that the individual kids and the family members were already, we were wanting, because we practice de-escalation. Even when the police don't. And at that very moment when they could have chose to de-escalate, they chose, this police said he chose between a taser and a gun. And he chose the deadly lethal weapon for a youth that had his back turned. And then the second part of that was that we had youth that were there who was wanting to talk to the investigators, but they were being told that if they didn't get in the back of the cruisers, that they would be arrested. These kids were terrified. They were not getting in this police cruiser to trust that the same police they just seen gunned down their friend had their best interests in heart. So they were terrified at that moment. But when I first looked at the news, what was released from the chief, I was so disappointed because one of the first things he said was that Brian T. Moody had a gun. I feel as though that statement should have been held until there was a full investigation done. I feel like he was already convicted in the public eye. On Sunday, I woke up and I seen a post that the city of Dayton Police made saying with two pictures of a gun and saying that that gun belonged to Brian T. Moody. Again, completely out of order because there had been no investigation done yet. So we are asking you as the mayor and the commissioners to be sure that if there is communication that is to be done, one, let's show compassion and empathy first. The second thing is, let's be transparent and have truth. A lot of what I've seen on the news and in the media about this young man was just not fair.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Okay, excuse me.
Yusuf Alzain.
Good evening. Yusuf Alzain, 4906 Amberwood Drive, Dayton, Ohio.
Evening.
In a sense, I'm glad to be back. As I promised many times that I'll be back as long as the conflict in Gaza is ongoing. I tried through my injury in the last three months. That didn't allow me to be here in person to keep you abreast via email messages or other social media announcements, to keep you aware of what's still going on. Today, it's my first day out to be in public. I was released, and I'm so excited about that. I thought I'm only going to talk about the 40,000 innocent human beings that are brutally being murdered on a daily basis. And now I'm going to add 40,001. And I'm not coming here to show off or have a splash. I'm going to keep this remaining three minutes of silence for each child that has been killed so far in Gaza and in Dayton, Ohio, and the nation. So allow me to keep my time just as a moment of silence, and I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alzain.
And I know three minutes sounds like eternity when you're not speaking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Alzain. That is all, Your Honor.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Dixie, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay, Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
Yes, Your Honor. The Chief, our Chief of Staff has asked me to announce that there will be a night of prayer for God's healing in our youth. It's a prayer of his joy. On July 7th at 6:00 PM at the Levitt Pavilion.
July 7th?
July 7th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Blackshear. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, Commissioners, closing comments. Commissioner Turner-Sloss.
Yes, Your Honor. Just very briefly, I would like to thank all of the residents, community leaders that came out this evening. Mr. Abrams, Bishop Cox, Mr. Johnson, Reverend Ward, Pastor Hurd, Mr. Malik Akbar, Ms. Ashley Erwin, Ms. Shandell, as well as Mr. Alzain. I would also like to give my condolences and lift up the family in prayer, the family of Mr. Moody. And as a mother, no mother wants to bury their child. No parent wants to bury their child. And so I understand the concerns of the community. I understand the frustration. And I too, as Reverend Ward has already stated, I live just around the corner. I too have two young black boys, ages 13 and 9 years old. But in the wisdom of our Chief, Chief Alzain, I ask that, his request for the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office to handle the investigation with factual information, being that the recommendations and the next steps will be moving forward to continue the investigation. And that as this body, we have entrusted the city manager and the police chief to provide all of the factual information that's necessary through this investigation. And so, again, as a member of this elected body, I will be a resource to the community. I live in the community. I have been entrusted and elected to serve this community. I'm a mother in this community, again. And so with that, I'm going to be a resource. And I would just ask that the community continue to lean on the members of this body to allow that all factual detailed information be provided and that with expedi- expiation, excuse me. And as soon as that information is released, we will provide that information to each member in the community. And I also ask that we all extend our love and our prayer that God holds the family and his friends, classmates, in God-loving, almighty hands. And I thank you all for being here this evening. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fretschau.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner-Sloss. And thank you for the citizens who have come and spoken. I would just echo that we're brokenhearted. In a given year, I sit with many parents whose children die in my capacity as a chaplain. And it is a journey that you want no person to have to journey on. And so our hearts are broken, and we we express our grief and our compassion in ways we can to the family and to the whole community. And Reverend Hurd, I think I probably identify you the most in terms of bawling up those papers because words now fail. But in the midst of it, I hope that we will all suspend judgment. There's no way we can move to justice until the full truth is known. And so there are things that have been said in the community in both directions, around the police and about the young man or the boy, the 16-year-old boy, that aren't true and are unfair to them. And so I ask us to endure through the night and let the full truth come out. And then in the light of the truth, we will hold all accountable into that truth. And it'll be hard to do in the light of the full truth. And it will involve difficult conversations. And it needs to take place in a community that is, quite frankly, fractured and broken. And we have work to do as a community to build the kind of community that we want, where every 16-year-old can live a life of safety and vitality and have a bright future. So as a community, we have work to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner, for your comments. One thing is really clear, this is a failure. Both my colleagues have just said that we have work to do, and that's very correct. We have work to do ourselves, we have work to do with our partners, many of whom have been in a lot of discussions these last few days about how to speed up plans that have already made, how to make new plans, how to fix things that we can at our level and urge those at other levels to start fixing those too. This is a failure, and really the only way to have any silver lining out of this is to make something good happen out of it. I will continue to work with my colleagues. I'd pleasure to work with our partners to make that happen. Thank you, Mayor.
None of us who are sitting up here find it easy to respond or make comments because this is just devastating as far as this community is concerned. Each of us have grown up in this community. I raised my family in this community. I have helped to raise thousands of young people by being a teacher and a coach and a mentor in this community. Just last week, and I mentioned in a news conference that we were talking about the unfortunate loss of life with a 22-year-old young lady on Home Avenue. Just six years older than my granddaughter. At that day, I was celebrating or trying to celebrate her 16th birthday. I still have to fight back tears thinking about her joy and the loss of that family, and now the loss of another young man, child, 16 years old. These are not good times. This community has failed our young people. This community has failed our young people. And so many of you mentioned different aspects of that when you spoke to us a few moments ago. And as we try to find ways to be patient and wait for the information, whether we like it or not, that validates what actually happened during that situation, we have to focus at the same time on how we find ways of preventing this from happening again. This Commission mentioned last week, and sometimes days go so fastly. I think it was probably last week and again this week. The Violence Interruption Process Program that we are implementing here in the city of Dayton, which will involve many people who are trained, experienced in working with culturally sensitive individuals to find ways of interrupting violence. It's been used across this nation in many cities. We've seen great results, 20%, 30%, 35% reduction in violence, especially gun violence in those cities. And it's positive to see that, again, people like, again, Reverend Ward and others here, the Montgomery County Health Department, Reentry Department, many, many more who are stepping up to the plate to assist us in this process. That's the type of support that we need. That's the type of energy that we need to have as far as this community is concerned. It is painful. It is painful. When I think of all the words that you shared with us this evening, so many of them hitting like arrows in certain places because they're hitting the target, making very strong and positive comments or factual comments. And of course, we can all debate sometimes about information that may not be as factual as it is, but I do understand the pain. I do understand the pain. I can't, as Commissioner Turner-Sloss said a few moments ago, I cannot believe or fathom the aspect of losing a child. There's just no way, no way, can think about that. And so as I pray every day for those individuals to find themselves in that situation, I also pray every day for us to find ways of coming together, rallying our troops, our energy, our power, to find more and more and better ways of working together to make Dayton the best place for someone to live, work, play, be educated, raise a family, and grow old. Thank you for the time, for listening. And please go with prayer and understand, again, that we are in this together. The reason why we're using the Violence Interruption Process because it has so many components. Where it's not just addressing those individuals who are doing things, but also have components that allow for us to treat and teach young people how to identify and resolve conflict at a lower level because we have too many situations, adults as well as young people, who don't know how to handle conflict. Thank you for your time. With no further business to come, before this Commission, this meeting is adjourned.